Sorry for being tardy. Jordan hasn't called the meeting in order.
No, I was just getting ready to, seeing you walk in.
You're good to go, Amy?
Yeah.
All right. Stay aware. All right. We will start the meeting. Call the meeting in order. Uh, the first one on the agenda is twenty-six dash zero zero five. Approval of the agenda.
Is there any, any thing to change on it? I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I second that.
Well, the motion we thought to approve the agenda all over favor. On the phone, it's passed. Uh, twenty-six dash.
Do you wanna wait till after the update on the school? See if anybody's got questions.
We could do that. We would be. We will table that for just a little bit. Open forum. And we will move on to twenty-six dash zero five seven. Action of consent agenda approval of minutes of the October meeting and payment of claims.
I had a question on the plans. But it's, it's not. But I seen on there that we were reimbursing one of the coaches for expenses at a. Deal. At a what? At regional volleyball?
Meals, I'm sure.
Yeah. For, for meals and stuff. Why are we reimbursing the coach and not sending stuff with him?
He didn't come in for money. I asked you on that morning and.
Okay.
He didn't know what was going on with the meals, so she put it on her credit card.
Okay.
And we reimbursed it. It came out to be almost even with what we would have sent. Her, our allotment for lunch.
Okay.
Her kids.
Yeah, I don't know about the amount. I just wondered if, wanted to make sure that.
Yeah.
That we didn't have something happening, that we weren't sending money with the coaches.
No, typically we do.
Okay. That was the only question I had.
Everybody good? Question, Terry?
Go first.
Good? Matt's going through it yet? Amber?
I'm good. I looked at you earlier.
Everybody good?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the October twenty-third agenda and. And then pay the claims.
I second that.
Well, a motion to approve the consent agenda and a second all over the favor. On the phone, it's passed. Twenty-six dash zero five eight. Old business. Update on construction project. I'm gonna guess that's why you're here.
I was up, right?
I agree, are you?
Yeah, I guess want me to jump right in?
Alright, cool.
So, uh, I don't. I don't remember how much we'd rehashed before, but basically we got a second petrograph test done or a petrograph test done by. Another party that, that we published. And tested out both area E, which is the, the north end high school area and area A, which is the south end. And both areas had, uh, ASR in it. Uh, so it kinda told us, you know, that concrete isn't just weak because it was, just didn't meet the strength requirement. It's weak because it's got ASR in it. And so, um. We've had our structural engineers try and redesign those footings. Uh, to where we could just keep what's there and, and keep moving without taking anything out. Uh, but, yeah, thinking that we could pour on top of those, uh, footings that are there. But it's really not practical to do that. They came back and he said, on the south wall of the gym, uh, those footings would end up having to be eighteen feet wide. Uh, and the west wall, no, the west wall would end up being ten feet wide. Uh, regardless, we'd have to take out the, uh, elevator pit, stair area, uh, just because, uh. Can't like obviously pour on top of those. Uh, and so it just, I mean, at this point, we don't really see another alternative except to take out the concrete that's there and replace it. That gets everything moving forward at this point and, uh. All the test breaks on the pores that have been made since then are all coming out really well, really good. Uh, a lot of them well over pit, well over five thousand PSI. Uh, for, uh, for the new areas and so, uh, everything's going positively that, that way. New concrete pours. Uh, just also think it's important to understand that we, one of the reasons we had to do this is even if. Some of that concrete didn't meet the four thousand or forty-five hundred PSI requirement. It still met twenty-five hundred or three thousand. Our structural engineer would have said, uh, that we could have probably used that. And so if it ever come back to a point where, where. You guys had made a decision or the decision had been made to take out that concrete and it could have stayed. Then that would have put, you know, others at risk and, uh, but basically I think we're past that point now. And we've established that there's the direction that we need to go. Uh, and just so everybody's clear about it, the school is not paying any extra for any of the concrete. Uh, anything that's being done now, uh, is on, uh, coldy and, uh. But even, like, you won't even be asked to approve any expenditures that you have to be reimbursed for. It's just. Everything that you've agreed to pay so far is all you're paying.
So the plan is to pull out the north footings that were pre-existing.
Yeah.
On the south side of the gym.
The south and the west and a little bit on the north. Basically where the wall is, where they, they re-poured that wall, they poured the wall on the north side. Anything to the west of that wall is, has to come out also.
Has there been any measures done to, uh, make sure the new concrete? Has there been any measures done to, uh, make sure the new concrete doesn't have the ASR as well? Is there?
Well, the mixed design is breaking even well above five thousand PSI. There'd be any, there's no reason I, I think to suggest that there's any ASR in there because it's. It's all getting out and breaking way above the strength requirements. And, and it's also only getting stronger. I mean, some of the tests came back at, uh, four thousand, uh, and jumped up to forty-five hundred and five thousand. So it's only getting increasingly stronger, uh, as, as we would expect it to happen, so.
Do you think there needs, excuse me, do you think there needs to be any further testing? Or you think with the strengths we're getting, we're doing?
I don't think so.
We're good to go?
You're getting fifty-five hundred PSI strength tests on several of these areas already. It's not something that we would, uh. Ever recommend getting these type of results. It's, it is, it's a decision you guys can choose to make though. I mean, it's a, uh, if you want to, I just don't know if I think it's necessary.
Is it possible to be getting those strength, those stronger breaks and it still have ASR in it? Does anybody mind that?
You know, it's not something that we deal with. Basically. Ever. And so I can't, I don't know if I could make that. Make that, uh. And I'll make a professional judgment of that, but I could ask. Some others about that. Problem is even our structural engineer has never had to deal with this issue before. So I don't, I need, I need, I'd wanna find somebody who had more experience than we, than our, than the structural engineer that we use.
Our account and Colby on board with tearing out the rest of the footing?
I think.
I'm. Here we are, right?
Yep.
Yes. Yep. Uh, we received the info late Friday and then reviewed again this morning with SPT. We do have, um, the information into Colby's court right now. Um, so they're processing that right now. Um, I plan to follow up with them in the morning to see if there's any questions. I've already let Greg know we'd reach back out to him, but I do not see, uh, any issues with that. Like I said, they just wanna make sure. They're looking at all the information, but similar to area A, um, I would expect there to be no issue on the north side. And I, I can follow up with an email once that conversation's been had, if that helps at all. The second petrograph on the area A, where was it taken from? Was it from the floor or footer?
Uh, just like that. Yeah, I'm just saying here. From, it was from a footing.
When do you?
They were both taken from footings.
Zach, when do you see him going back in with the floor on the south side?
Oh, I'll jump in, sorry. I had a, an update in there, but, um, just speaking with them today. They are finishing up, uh, demo in area A, um, today and tomorrow. They will be re-compacting, bringing in dirt, re-compacting the footings hopefully on Wednesday. Um, is their goal right now. Um, they will be, so essentially where the footings are torn out, you'll have a hole where the concrete was. They'll have to build that back up with, uh, subgrade, have to have all that re-tested. And then once that is tested and passed, Colby will then come in, um, redig the footings and then pour new concrete. Everything that I've, um, talked with them so far on getting that scheduled. They are hoping to have new concrete for the footings, um, starting next week. And the wall on the south side would be more than likely the following week. Um, so as soon as those are poured, we'll have to get, um, crews and precision in there. That's the mechanical, mechanical plumbing and electrical contractor to double check all of their underground. Um, just since there's been machinery over the top of it. So we'll have to test that out, fix any broken pieces of pipe, um, before we pour the slab on grade. So slab on grade would occur after that. So here. Probably mid to mid-December timeframe. Do you want me to go ahead into the rest of the update or a, answer questions?
Are you going, Greg?
Uh, just looking at some of the test results. I, like, most of these test results are we're getting from a seven to fourteen day break. They're increasing a thousand PSI from seven to fourteen days. So just wanted to check if I started out at, uh, forty-eight, sixty-eight PSI and it's at fifty-six, eighty-one PSI. So we're seeing a good, uh. Increase in strength over there that time, right? So.
And we, we are still using two third-party tests on all that concrete as well as double verification of those numbers.
Okay.
Did area A have ASR in the floor? In the slab on grade?
Yes.
Uh, all of our petrographs were pulled from the footings. So that's all I can verify right now.
Footing in the wall? The, the two areas were footings ever taken, yeah. I can't say, I know there's pictures of the, uh, concrete and Zach, you might elaborate on this, but. There's pictures of the concrete that was taken out and some of it had gotten rained on. And you could see the ASR starts to appear in the, in the concrete that had been taken out. And I, Zach, I don't know if that's in the floor slab as well, or if it was just in the, uh, footings themselves. Uh, I think you guys had the pictures, right?
Yeah, I would have to verify with the guys on site. I, I did not ask that question, um, but I could ask that tomorrow and see if they've got any of those on site still.
Hey Zach, this is Brian. Um, I'm on here with me, we said to work, but I wasn't able to call in. I can touch on that. There was a bit of the bull gel that was like the ASR in there, but like I said, we haven't done an actual test on it. But it looks just like the other areas do.
And Brian, to confirm, that's the slab on grade you're talking about?
Yes.
But yeah, like Brian said, no, no official test report specifically your petrograph done on the slab on grade itself. Um, but to, but to Greg's, um, point, we do have photos on Procore. Um, and I know Eric and you have access to those. Um, but I don't, I don't have that in the update, photos of that in the update itself. But, um, do you have it if we need to send anything through?
For you, Doug, Greg. Zach, what have you got for, for an update?
Okay, real quick, I will share my screen if everyone's able to see it. Um, let's see here. Yeah, not sure if you have that in front of you or not as well. So just kinda starting as a, a summary, um, area A, kinda talked about it already. But we do have concrete demo, um, currently going on. We're being especially careful because we do have a footing that ties into the existing gymnasium. So it'd be the north side of, of area A, south wall of the existing gymnasium. So being careful as we demo that, not to damage those existing footings. Um, but like I mentioned earlier, once that demo is complete, they'll work on the build back of the subgrade. Get all of that tested, um, by the third party to ensure they're hitting the proper densities, uh, main compaction. Before digging it back out to put footings, um, concrete footings in place. So similar to the first go around, we'll do, uh, all of the footings and south wall. Um, and then we will progress into checking and repairing any underground roughing that has been damaged during that. Tear out process, obviously with machines driving, um, trying to be as careful as possible. Um, but we'll do all the checking and testing to make sure all of that is, um, passing test before we cover it up with a concrete slab on grade. Um, we do have rebar on site, so that's ready to go for the new concrete. Anchor bolts were supposed to arrive today. Um, so that would be basically all the footings that we're replacing will have new anchor bolts to go in there, um, to be safe. And not reusing any of that material, uh. Previously, just because during dam, or during demo, uh, one, those can be damaged. So wanna make sure we're going back in with the correct material. Um, and then, once we get back to where basically slab on grade is completed and that's when we'll. Get HME back on site, um, to continue steel erection or to start steel erection on that south side. Um, area B, um, is the existing gymnasium. We do have, um, some exploratory work going on in there, but nothing too crazy on the inside. Um, some electrical that has to be adjusted, um, working through with a few items with precision on those. Um, we have had crews on site, crews mechanical and plumbing on site to verify some of the conditions in place. So when that work does start, um, which we're targeting spring break, um, for area B. Work, um, to do that work. Um, but having them on site to verify everything in place. So once we are able to go, we know basically everything that's going on right there. Um, and then work that's currently going on in area B, we do have the roofing. Um, weathercraft is performing the new roof overlay up on area B. So adding insulation, um, and then a new coverboard and membrane over the top of that to ensure we're giving the correct. R value for the new RTU units, um, that are, that will eventually be placed on the locker room roof. We did run into, um. A condition that was not, I guess not typical, um, during. With this new roof, we have to adjust the roof crickets. Um, roof cricket are essentially the slope in the roof that's typically built up with insulation to divert water to the downspouts. Um, the crickets on this roof are actually a. Concrete and like wood chip mixture. Um, so there has to be some demo being done on that because it is not, uh, did not find that to be the typical installation. So working through that process right now, um, I'm getting that corrected so we can get all of the water to flow to the correct location. I have one here that we're pending completion of that roof the next week. Um, as of right now, they are potentially going to be working this Saturday, um, buttoning up. Obviously that's gonna be weather dependent, but, um, they're progressing nicely and like I said, just trying to. Hit that one buttoned up before the end of the month, if at all possible. And then area E, uh, kinda, I think Greg touched mostly on it. Um, we, we just got those responses late Friday and early this morning. Uh, so we're working through that with Colby and then, um, we'll more than likely roll from area A directly into area E. Um, and then, um, like Greg said, we do have all of. All of the walls and the footings that made sense to pour. Um, we did leave out the west wall of the locker room and wrestling room just for some access for underground to get the. Skid steers and mini hoes and all that through the door. Um, and making sure we didn't have to leave small sections out with it being a storm shelter. So that entire wall was left out, but we do have, um, the north stair, a portion of the north wall. And then the east and dividing wall between the wrestling room and locker room port. Um, with all, like I said, test reports coming back good in those areas. And then similar, uh, to last month's update, we're continuing to procure materials. Uh, we did get some pretty good updates from mechanical, um, plumbing and electrical contractors that. A lot of their, or most, all of their materials should be arriving before end of year. Um, which will be great to have basically stored in a insured and bonded warehouse. So once those activities are ready to happen, all that needs to happen is have them shipped to the job site. Um, biggest portion of electrical we have left is their main distribution panel, which is basically where all of the power comes into the building. And then distributes out to the smaller electrical panels. Um, those are usually the longest lead time items from the electrical scope. Um, so it's gonna be good that we have that sitting ready to go. And then mechanical, um, originally, we were showing that the remainder of the rooftop units were going to show up in January. Um, we just got an update, uh, early last week or the end of the fall, week before that. Um, that we have the rest of our RTUs within a arrival date, twelve fifteen. Um, so that'd be mid-December. Um, but those dates shift around a bit, but, um, as of right now, Cruz is expecting those materials to arrive, um, before twenty-twenty-five. So also a good sign for material coming in. As previously noted, we've got area A steel on site. Um, it has been moved around a bit. I believe they moved it down to our storage yard that we were renting. Uh, and then area E structural steel, joists and joists and decking are being stored, um, off-site right now. Uh, but they are also ready to go to be loaded and, and show up on site. Um, and then area C, we are, um. Today was their original delivery date to the job site. So they'll be also storing those materials until they're ready. Um, and then area D, which is the small section on the north end of the, uh, classroom wing. That is pending December, um, completion and more than likely will be stored as well. And then really, I think we touched base on, like I said, area E already. Um, but upcoming construction activities continuing on demo in area A, earthwork, footings, underground and slab on grade. And then expecting to have the area B roofing complete by end of this month. I got photos there just kinda showing where we're currently at. Um, if you got to print out, upper left picture is the roof up on area B with their insulation. Um, and they're fastening those as they go. And then once they're done with the coverboard that goes on top of that, they'll have the membrane going throughout. And then top right is sock cutting in area A before removal. The lower mid picture is after the slab has been completely removed. Um, I believe that was early mid or end of last week. Um, was that picture? And then since I sent this out on Friday, um, I just added one more photo today of just. Since I know there, um, questions in area E where the new walls have been poured versus what has been left out. So you can kinda see from the picture here that we've got about half of the north wall completed with us. With one section left out for the ramp. And then that east wall along the football field and the dividing, dividing wall between locker room and wrestling room. And then I just, just threw a drawing on here, just showing the roof crickets on area B. Just on the roof where, like I said, um, running into the concrete crickets. Um, there's a photo of a portion of that that came up. Like I said, it's a kind of a non-typical concrete and wood chip mixture, um, is what it appears to be. So they are.
That's all.
We're working, working through that right now to, to remove and make sure the new, this is, the new crickets are going to where we're diverting water to the correct downspout location. Uh, I think that's all I've got for you.
Zach, do you have a easy way to show a map or a legend of where A, B, C, D, E, F, G area?
Yeah. A is elementary. A is elementary, E is north side high school.
I've got that, but I don't, is there more? C is the cafeteria and classrooms in front. And D is like the offices and the classrooms.
Yeah. So yeah, I need a map.
I've already forgot what you said B was, so.
The existing gym.
Yeah, so let me see. Are you able to see my screen?
Yep.
Okay, so this is in the upper, uh there's a key plane on each drawing basically showing where where we're at, so. Area A, elementary, area B is the existing gymnasium. With locker rooms and will be classrooms up front. Area C, um kind of a large area, we've got music, um the cafeteria, kitchen. Classroom area, bathrooms, elevator, um it's kind of all here. And then, area D is the office area and also classroom, and there's, I believe there's some offices over here on the east side. Which is basically the north northwest section of the building, and then, area E is everything with the. New gymnasium, wrestling room, locker rooms, and upstairs we have the. Workout area, um like not my actual name over there, but. And then, area F is the GOAG building, which that GOAG building will not work, will not take place until summertime. So we're not displacing students during the school year.
Just to re-verify, all the old concrete is gonna be removed. And report on the north and the south, which the south is pretty well done.
Questions?
Anybody have some short questions for these gentlemen?
I would like to ask Greg some questions, uh may, is that okay? Okay, so the school board, SPT, county warden, communities. Gone through several months, seeing these things being taken care of, which is all good news. I'm really glad it impressed its strength, protesting well, that's good news. But I I still have lingering concerns about ASR and the new mixed design. And the reason being is I I called Crowell's uh Kansas aggregate people, alright? They told me that the fine sand that they're using is the same sand Matt used in his mixed design. I don't know if you knew that or not. Okay, so sharing that with you, alright? So, going back to the all the things that unfortunately happened, I'm having a problem. Wrapping my mind why there wasn't some extra effort and forethought to make sure that these aggregates were. Too tested for ASR before any concrete was made. So, I I just still have that concern, and I think it's still worth checking out.
I mean, that's certainly a decision the school board can make to go ahead and get this tested, new other concrete tested.
Could you speak up for me, please, Greg?
I said that's certainly a decision that could be, that's a school board could make if they wanna, if they felt like they wanted to get, have more testing done. It's not something that we would ever say needed to be done if uh concrete testing to meet strength requirements. So, uh I understand where you're coming from, it's, you know, it. Yeah, I don't know what else to tell you, I mean, if I'm meeting the strength requirements. I don't know if they have any other.
Well, in in the big picture, Greg, I I look at you with as a prime professional here, and I think you. Should be leading the charge to do this, and I hope it's, there's absolutely no ASR. Now, I don't see, I don't know how you receive SPT's responsibilities, but I really believe. In this situation, architecture, the prime professional, you have contacts that can help you with things like this. And so, um just suggesting if there's remnants of any of these compressive tests. Those might be a good place to start, that I'd certainly be checking up on uh. Crowell's involvement in their materials just to make sure, because we just don't need this anymore. Okay, thank you for listening.
Anybody else have a short question or anything? Anybody else? To move on, if you'd like to head home?
Only if you guys just wanna make sure you guys are taken care of and you guys are comfortable that, yeah, we're answering your questions.
Terry, you good?
I'm good.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks for coming, Greg, appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, guys.
We'll go back to the schedule, and we will go to twenty-six dash zero five nine, shoot business.
Here we go. Alright, so. KISA. So, try to make this bigger for everybody.
It's the smallest lettering.
Alright, so, uh the KISA processes are accreditation process. Kansas Education Systems Accreditation. Is what that stands for.
I always wondered that.
Kansas Education Systems Accreditation, so. I think we're technically out of year one, which is what we've been kinda talking about the last year. Basically, our goals, um our fundamental was quality instruction. And then, our structure was professional collaboration, we could have chosen from, I believe, four fundamentals. And five or six structures. And and we've gone through that before, those haven't changed. In the KISA process. And so, with that, we, our goal last year was to, our six-month goal was to. Write a calendar that had eight collaboration times within the calendar, and then. Basically, our one-year goal was to develop a. Process. Document with it, I mean, rules are what's coming to my head, but I don't know if they're really rules or not. But just guidelines for people to work, or for the teachers to work through while we're doing this. And then, so, so this, and we've met both of those goals. We've heard, heard back from the state that we've pushed down what we're supposed to do on those. It is kind of. It is a little difficult because we've, before we're starting our new plan, we've only. Gone through about three or four of the collaboration times to, so we don't, we don't really feel we have a lot of data. To go by on their success or or anything like that, um or things that we would change on them. We have seen some things, um I think between September, October, November. There wasn't a lot of time in between on those, and so. We thought maybe there could have been a little bit more space in there. And things, so that 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 is one thing that we would possibly improve for for upcoming years. And so, basically, we've chosen, and I, when I say we have, talking in our our KISA team. We have how many teachers involved?
We have three elementary and three high school, junior high, high school. Along with Tara Bowles and Jessica Wellington and then us three.
And then, we have a consultant through Southwest Plains, Brittany Shields, really, she's out of Goodland. That helps us with it and, um so. Wow, so we met November sixth. Um with Brit- with Miss Shields, Mrs. Shields, and we we did the. Requirements to finish up the, what we needed to do for the year. And then, we prepared for, um it's called a school improvement day in a, in Oakley. And then, um we started working on our action plan for the coming year. Uh so, November tenth, a week ago, we went to Oakley, um we were able to take our whole team with us. And they have a, it's called a school improvement day, and so I can show you kinda the calendar that we. Have to, that we're based off of here. So, November sixth is that day with the consultant, November tenth is the school improvement day. After that, we have sixty days to develop our action plan for the upcoming year and share with stakeholders. The board is considered a stakeholder, uh our teachers are considered stakeholders, and then. With parents, we're, we're taking it like to our um parent advisory council. And so, um I know we've done the, well, we're doing the board tonight, we've talked to the teachers. At our last collaboration day, and so, we'll still need to go talk with the advisory council.
And I think their meeting is the first Monday of December, so we'll talk to them then.
And so, by January ninth, we have to have. This spreadsheet complete, all the way down. So we have quite a bit there already, now there are, we can do two goals, but not very many schools do that, so.
They offer it, but.
So, we we've just chosen to do one, one goal. And then, so after that, that sixty days is basically January ninth, we have to have our KISA action plans admitted. From there, KSD will review it, and they have two weeks. Um to approve or send back for changes, and then we would have two weeks, so that kinda goes on from there. Um in May of twenty-six, um we would have to have met our six-month target. We will meet with KSD at that point, again, to review that six-month target. And then, by a year from now, we have that, we will need to have met the one-year target on the new plan.
If you determine who's target, who's meeting the target?
They they have, um so they have a person for each region of the state. Ours is Amber Miller, who used to be a consultant with Southwest Plains, and we've worked with her. For several years, um through the consulting part and then through um KSD. And then, um they have people that help them.
Yeah, so at our school improvement day, we had to present our plan from last year and how we felt like we did with it. There's ten questions we had to answer, and while we were telling our answers, they had two or three. People that were listening in from KSD there and basically deciding whether or not we hit those marks or not. And then, we did have, after, after our conversation there, they took us into a separate room and asked us questions like that they might have had on it. So, basically, on November tenth, they graded us for last year.
Those, those were, um. Those, those other people were, were ones who were school administrators or educators. From other districts, I think we had a principal from Russell at ours, superintendent from Southwest Kansas somewhere.
One of them was from Garden City.
Any, was she one or was she just there? Um the special education director from Oakley was there too, so we don't, we don't know if she was in that role or just. There to. Yeah, so, um anyways, um on the, the school improvement day, you're there with three other districts. So we were there with Quinner, um Wallace County, and St. Francis, and so, um. We, we were, we were able to hear about their plans and they heard about ours, um there was time for us to meet with like. Positions, so I met with the sup- like personally, I met with the superintendents from the other three districts, just like. Jeff and Lacy met with the principals from those districts and things, um so getting to our plan. Do you guys wanna kinda go over that?
Yeah, so we, we actually stuck with the same ones as last year with the quality instruction and professional, professional collaboration. There's only so many, um. You kinda have to work your way backwards because they have like actual standards that they want you to hit, so then you can't just make it your own, you have to actually work towards something. So if you go to. Yeah, the the first measure of progress, we, we kinda worked our way backwards from there, so it's district collaboration. Expectations for high-quality instructional strategy implementation is where we went, cause it's under, if you go over, yeah. So, the top boxes were like resource allocation, educator evaluation, those are the, there's six of them that you can choose from, and so ours was quality. Instruction, so we went under professional collaboration, and that's where we kind of looked through as a team to decide where we wanted to be, and we decided that. We want to be using high-quality instructional strategy implementation in, for our classes, right? Any classroom, it's K twelve, and so we're looking for something that would fit all of us, right? So, um so, we worked our way backwards, I mean, yes, we could do. Um screening data analysis, yes, we could do structured literacy, but we felt like with the different grade levels and. You know, content areas of this would hit everybody, everybody would be able to use this in our classrooms. So, we worked our way backwards, and so if you go back to the other plan. We decided that we would continue our collaboration time, and that's what they want us to do, is build off of our last plan and not just go. Reinvent the wheel every time, so we're gonna continue to use our collaboration time and base it around high-quality instructional. Materials and strategies to use in the classroom, so when we're doing things, we're not just grabbing random. Curriculum and random worksheets, we're actually, they're high-quality, they've been deemed by the state as high-quality. And we wanna focus that in, that in on our tiered system of support time, so that's our stampede time at the elementary school, that's your seminar time at the high school. And so, we can track that, so we've made a document last year that tracks like what we're doing in our. Collaboration time, so we're not just in there just visiting, you know, we have specific questions that we're answering about our fast bridge data or our. Kansas State assessment's data, and so we're using that, and so now, in there also is. Have you tried a specific strategy, what strategy did you try, did you see any improvement with that? Like, after you put in the strategy, which we are going to determine still, and we have a little bit of time. Yes, here's the document, um what, what do we plan on doing? In our time and do we see progress, basically, so we can, we can track that.
Sorry, that's one of the pieces I've added is that student metrics, if you look at that, um you know, and this, our improvement. What are we driving, how's it affecting our students, and and like what we're, what we're looking to. Kinda measures our student, is our uh screener data, our fast bridge data, you know, seeing improvement in that. You know, hopefully through our strategies we're implementing.
Right, because our overall goal is test scores, I mean, we want, we want good test scores, and so how are we going to get that? So, we feel like we can track some different ways through here. Yes, so we'll continue using our document, um we're adding in, I'm not sure if this one has. It in there yet, no, um and a new box where basically what strategy are you using? The guiding questions are going to be like, what is your strategy, how did you use it, how did you, you know, test? Whether you use it or not and um so. So back on that other spreadsheet, it's basically saying what you will be doing, who's going to be doing it, how do you know? And so we filled all that out and then um our six month target is to modify our collaboration meeting agenda document. And include a focus on implementing additional high quality instructional strategies while also continuing to focus on reviewing student data. So that's our six month goal, um is basically what strategies are we going to be tracking? Um and then the one year target, we will have identified the high quality instructional strategies that have impacted student data. And then we'll continue to build off of those basically for the next full year and hopefully we can take that and. Do our next step, you know, build.
She said that it kind of geared toward the test and stuff, whi- which test did we go through here a few months ago that they changed?
And actually, we're yeah, we're only that. Fast bridge and that's why we want, that's why we stuck with fast bridge on our screen and dat- screener data here. Because first of all, fast bridge, we can do kindergarten through twelfth grade, state assessments are only third. And not even all of high school takes them, only eighth grade, tenth grade, so this way we can track all those and see.
Yeah, and I mean, even if you could do the state assessments every class every year, I mean, you have a year in between those. And it's a long time to implement strategies and stuff without seeing a result, so we're hoping with the screener data three times a year. You know, we can, you know, hopefully see the the needle moving. And adjust if it's not, you know, adjust our strategy.
Is it working, is it not, if it's not working, let's try something different, you know? Like this last year with the high school, we try we're trying my path and we don't feel like we have a good enough. We don't know yet, cause we haven't tested the second time. So we don't want to move on too fast without checking this one out before moving on. So if my path is working, then I think we continue with it, if it's if we don't see results by December, then what do we need to do different?
Whether it's tweaking how we use that or. Looking at other options for our um intervention time or in in seminar time.
Same thing with the grade school, we've used different ways to group our kids in the past and is it working currently? We're not sure, so give us and it's it is November, well, well, we're getting a better, it's hard because. You can't test your kids every day, that's you gotta get some instruction in there to see what we're, if it's working or not, so.
I just, I find it hard to believe that we can't track these kids and their ability to learn better than what we can. It seems like every year or six months or two years, we're changing and trying to do something different and track them a different way and. We lose track of them in between.
We've had fast bridge for quite a few years, I feel like that's been good um and consistent. The hard part is effort. How do you get a student to put out their best effort on a test when?
Hard part is is not all the kids learn the same.
No, exactly.
They don't test the same and you'll see you'll never get the same.
And that's why you do multiple, you do multiple measures just to try to see if, you know, if they're consistent across well. If they're consistent with an issue. You know they have that issue.
Well, and it goes by teachers in the classroom, are you seeing this in a classroom, are you seeing that they're struggling? Or are they just not doing well on their tests or, you know, so there is a big mixture of things that go into it, so.
Um it's kind of on the same thing, but our next topic and Emily. Uh made us a copy of that, um I know it's hard to read, um I do have it in the folder for tonight's meeting. A copy of it and I don't know that it's a. It's not any different than what we went through the other, the last meeting, but it it is, I don't know if you remember in June, we went through. Um and we talked about our test scores and we talked about like cohort cohort le- um. Levels and basically to me that is what class um. Were were, you know, so we can track it from year to year with the specific class and so on the top. Um we have the um. The class uh or the the district overall and then going down. We start with this class of two thousand thirty four, which is our third grade and then it just goes down to the class of twenty five. Which I just had them in there from last year when we made this, but that's our our seniors from a year ago and so it. The spreadsheet just shows how they scored from year to year, um I will say that first column. Uh we know to your point, thi- this is where the tests got were different and from up so. So I I I should go in and put a way to identify that year as a as a change, just like if you look at. Nineteen and twenty, you'll see an empty box all the way down and that's obviously the COVID year where we didn't have state assessments. And so um I think it's, right now, it's it's good for everybody to look at and see kind of where we're. Where we're at, I think, uh I'm not gonna say every case, cause every every class is different. Um and every year to an extent can be different, but you can kind of, you can get some trends that are fairly close. As far as um seeing some trends on on the class, um it's not the end all be all, but. I believe it's just another tool for us to look at. And so I just, I wanted to share that with you, I I think I told you last meeting that I would, so. Um it is like I said in the bor- board folder, so it's it it's probably easier for. For you to read on on that um than it is on 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 the sheet, just cause it is so small. Um but I wanted to share that with everybody.
On the levels, uh just to understand what they mean, level one is limited. Students show a limited ability to demonstrate the required knowledge and skills. Two is basic, students demonstrate a basic ability to use knowledge and skills, three is proficient. Demonstrate effective ability and then four is advanced, so.
Is this the test that was different this year? Though it's no way to compare this year to past years.
This first column is. The fir- is this year's.
Yeah, the whole.
The whole first column is this year's. Yeah, all the way down. Or and I say this year is twenty four, from twenty four twenty five, this whole year.
And you'll see like what we've talked about, you'll see um where there's also empty boxes, cause um they they didn't have. A test that year.
So that ninth grade.
That grade would be a year off, so the eighth grade would be this year's ninth graders.
Like when you start right there, class of twenty thirty four, third grade is technically our current fourth grade class.
So test they took last year.
Um science, I don't know if we've said. Did we, okay, they they did not and will not give us back our science scores for this last year. Because they said that through the state of Kansas, they were so skewed that they aren't accepting anyone's scores because. Bad tests, too much variance, they couldn't make any sense of the data, so. So all those kids took a test and their teachers were like waiting to get the results back and no. They will not get their test results back. Welcome to education.
Man, it's something good to look at, but it's still gotta take it with a grain of salt as well, I mean some classes are big, some classes are small and you might have.
Two students can really. And these, I mean, some of these kids actually were in our school district for two weeks when we tested them. They had just moved in and welcome to Atwood, we're gonna give you a test. So, you know, it is what it is and we do have the individual test results, so we can see and kind of pick it apart. And that's what these collaboration days have been really good for, to see who's getting ones, twos, threes, fours. So you can say, okay, I think maybe he didn't test well or, you know, sh- she was sick that day. Or, you know, what what happened or they're brand new to the country, you know? So it's it's been really good to be able to sit through it and and look at it.
Um one thing the the teachers have been doing, they're called interim assessments. And they're they're practice assessments for the for the for the state assessment. And in that, it's it's not used to teach a test, it's used to understand where the kids are. And then and to a certain extent, understand how they're asking questions, just so they're prepared for that. And I've I've had a lot of experience where kids, they they know how to do the work, it's just the way the question, the test is. The question is asked of them, it just makes it really hard. Um this question I haven't seen on any others, but I had a fifth grade science test. And it gives my first year of teaching fifth grade and the the question was, what is a typical? Weather right now in Kansas or something and at that, I I remember the year, it was up in this area. Had just had a blizzard, like right that day and I could just see all the students. Up here putting snow and then I also saw like. We we were sunny and I could see all of, you know, the kids I had putting sunny, their their real answer was wind is what they were looking for. But that that was a question that was thrown out and everything and.
All year.
Anyways, just like with everything, it is a measure, but we want to have the atmosphere that we're gonna do the best we can at it. And that I think that goes a long ways towards seeing truly where we're at with things.
We will start our fast bridge testing again on December first, so.
When?
December first will be our next session, round two for winter fast bridge scores.
Yeah, for that one.
Any questions on the assessments? Everybody good?
Alright, um so on C here, um. The December fifteenth regular meeting, we have a lot going on that night, um we have the board meeting scheduled. We have the elementary music band Christmas concert and then the junior high eighteen tournament. Is that that evening as well and so um. Just with those, with the concert and things going on, um we're really not thinking that it'd be great to have the board meeting. That night, um and so I think it'd be a good idea if we would. Would change it to a different night or morning, um. So um I had on here either Wednesday, the se- the tenth or seventeenth, I mean, we could start at. Five thirty or or something as well, cause I know there's church activities and things, um and then. Or we could do a morning meeting, I I really don't think that it will be a long agenda, uh I know things can happen. Um like typically, we would have like our audit and things like that, but we're, we really haven't had any feedback. About that yet, so. And then maybe starting, okay, so but typically, that needs a little bit more time to to really. Um to happen, so I I with Thanksgiving and things, I just, I doubt that we'd even have that on that on that meeting night. So I.
Is there anybody amongst us that for Wednesday, you have obligations for church stuff or anything that it would affect, is there?
The community Christmas program on the seventeenth. Just putting that out there in case, you know, that whole big concert that the community does in case.
Is there a place we can chat at? Yeah, the tenth would be a little early, cause that make a really long time between December and January. There's December, once you get into it, there's something every night.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, either across street or at the Christian church.
Coming, well, that's different. There's a concert on the second, that's just a Christmas concert. When would that typically start, what time? I wouldn't think if we started by five thirty, we'd be, we'd be done.
I'm assuming it's safe to say that since nobody in here knows that nobody here is at the inn.
County Christmas program at Christian church.
Shall we do Wednesday to seventeen? Five thirty? Matt, good?
Have we had to do a motion in the past?
Yeah, yeah, I'd say go ahead and do it. Mister President, I'll move to move the s- December fifteenth regular meeting to December seventeenth at five thirty. P M.
Make a motion and a.
Second it.
And a second all of the favor. Oppose, pass, we should move on to twenty six dash zero six zero, administration report.
For for my report, I just. We've been operating off of this the the last two. Two weeks, but I just wanted to send you or show you the kind of our temporary operation with transportation. So um. Just really quickly here, the activity scheduling, um we have um. The junior senior high office i- is kind of taking that over for us. I'd say ninety five percent of the transportation comes out of the high school anyway, so that that made a lot of sense. Um route scheduling um with Lori and Emily, um I think maybe it's in here somewhere, but. If there's like a like a driver gets sick over. I think maybe it's in here somewhere, but if there's like a, like a driver gets sick overnight, they're supposed to call me. So we can find somebody, um, weather decisions, um, is typically the transportation director and I do that. Um, and so, that's, that'll mostly be on me now, um, but Jeff and Lacey always help with that as well. Um, the routes, m- most things are staying the same, but we've, we've moved a couple drivers around to. To help that, or help the Herndon route, um, and we've kind of had a variety in the afternoon, just because that slot's empty. Um, doesn't mean that we're, we don't have somebody for that, we've been able to fill that so far, um. Then we, for route drivers, uh, we have, uh, on the left, we have those who are licensed on the right, those who can. Um, drive suburban, uh, we also got like Rob and Deon have, have offered to help as well. Um, activity drivers are listed there, um, so for kind of, to keep track of things. Lori and Dave, um, are tracking oil and tire wear, um. Addressing the minor maintenance and wear issues and, um. If it, if it's more than that, then we'll, we'll take it to mechanic as needed, um. Dave has been keeping track of the fuel tanks, so, uh, what's a company we use?
Frontier.
Frontier, uh, I guess they're pretty good about keeping track of that as well, um, if there's an issue on the trip, um. The drivers have been tri- directed to call either Rob or Jeff from, or myself, um, but Rob or Jeff would help handle that. Um, kinda, um. Part of that as well is, um, just the driver's role in this is to, to make sure if they have an issue to follow up with Dave or Lori. And then, um, they are in charge of fueling their assigned vehicle or bus. Um, just, I think that was something the director had been doing, then just that was something that took on. Um, cleaning, Lori's had Marcy in there to, to get the bus and vehicles cleaned and, and things like that. Um, and for the most part, that's it, um, we started off pretty well with it. It's only been a couple, couple weeks, but we had a drivers meeting this morning where if we had a hole, we talked about it. And things and I, I think we're doing pretty good with that, um, do you have a question?
I, I talked to a couple drivers and they're concerned with the cold weather coming in the battery situation, if they get in a truck in the morning and it must click, click, click. They call, and what happened? Um, to get a jump starter or get something going. And along that line, how many buses do we send out in the morning?
We have six routes.
Six?
Um, but like our southeast route is done by, like a suburban, um.
Anyway, that was one of their concerns was if their truck, if their bus don't start in the morning, in the morning scheme. Who, who's, who do they call, what do they do?
Uh, I would say that typically be Dave, Rob or, or Jeff on that.
So, they got these. Jump starter boxes. You guys might have one. I've got one, you might have one, some of them you can get them very reasonably. A few hundred dollars. And they're like a little battery pack you keep on there.
It's a battery pack.
Yeah, might be something to look at as, just to throw in the buses for a few hundred dollars for the winner or something, I don't know. Just something that.
Or even one in the bus barn that's.
That's always on a charger.
I think the bigger issue would be, do we put it down here, because we want all the drivers leave from here. Like, just because.
We may have one too, uh, big jump box.
Put it in the bus barn or something, maybe? Just, I don't, it'd surprise me if we don't. If they take them home and leave them home.
Yeah, and then Rob ran a cord for the diesel buses onto the playground and. I know they moved some stuff around for the activity buses and things, to get, make sure they can get plugged in.
Yeah, I'll check with Dave and Lori.
Who is responsible for cleaning a bus out on an activity trip or an activity trip?
Uh, the team should be responsi- I mean, the, the team should not leave trash and things like that. Now there's, there's gonna be naturally some trash, or not trash, excuse me, just some dirtiness that the teams wouldn't necessarily be.
Well, I mean, I'm talking about any activity trip. For the, uh, funky patch or whatever.
It, it should be the, those who are taking the activity, and I mean, the, the group of.
Is it whoever is chaperoning the kids responsible?
Yeah, should be holding the kids responsible for keeping things cleaned up and.
Are you talking like trash and garbage, or are you talking just like, you know, mud on your shoes and?
No, I'm talking about trash.
Yeah, it, it should be the. The team or the class or whoever's taking that.
Might ought to make everybody aware of that.
We've, yeah, made, tried to make it a point of emphasis here.
And right now, it's like the changing of coaches and seasons, it's probably a good time to. Remind everyone that they're in charge, while the world's in charge of their stuff.
We had already talked about the collaboration days, where there are discussions, so I don't really.
Well, how's it going now in comparison when Trevor was there? Is there any issues?
I mean, I think if, any issues we've had, we've been able to work out.
Yes, so it hasn't been a real problem, man.
I, not yet, I, I mean, I could see. Like, ma- or mechanical issues, if, if like our communication breaks down with the way we're doing it. I could see issues in the future, that's just something we're gonna have to keep, keep working on, so.
Well, I mean, I would think Dave has the capability, he has the willingness and the time.
Mm-hmm, yeah, he's been a very good help, Dave and Lori have done a really good job of keeping things organized and.
You're done?
Well, I can go, I suppose. Um, October twenty ninth, our eighth and tenth graders attended Reality U in Oberlin. Um, it's a one day financial literacy, kind of a life simulation, um, they answer questions. Interests, things they might wanna do, they take their GPA into consideration, and they're either paired with somebody or they're single. Anyways, they, they have a, a, um. A monthly budget combined or whatever, and then they go around to these different booths and make life choices like. Are you gonna have kids, how many kids do you have, uh, what kind of car are you gonna drive, insurance for your vehicles, get a house, all these types of things and. They're trying to make the month with, you know, food, entertainment, all those types, and then there's even one where you go and it's like by chance you roll the dice. And you just got a speeding ticket and it costs you this much and your insurance went up, factoring all those things into, into, you know. Um, so we've gone the last three or four years, um, Oberlin's been nice enough to host us. Uh, we keep talking that when things are done, we'll alternate years of who hosts. Um, because it is, they have community members come into and, and man those tables and talk to the kids, so. They actually pass around the fake babies too that cry.
Honestly, it's a, it's a great experience because like my kids even talk about it still, like who they were married to and what they drove and. You know, it's, it's, it sticks with them.
Yeah, you know, but student with that. Hellcat Hemi charger is having to get a second or third job to pay for their car, you know, it's like, yeah. So, no, it, it was good, I think the kids seemed to enjoy it, um, so, uh. Thanks to Oberlin and, um, Mrs. Bowles and then Mrs. Klein with us as a sponsor this year too, so. Uh, we had nine students attend the design and engineering seminar at Oakley on the twenty ninth as well, Mrs. Bowles took kids to that. Um, learned about computer animation, we had hands-on engineering activities. Um, learned about careers, civil, civ- civil, chemical, tried to combine those two words there, and mechanical engineering. Um, Tara and I met with Karen Riggler, she's a C T consultant, our former one retired, so we've. Um, or we've hired Karen to help us with that, um, with communication with her. Um, she's, she's got some ideas on adding pathways, modifying our pathways, um. To give our kids more opportunities, uh, one thing is work-based learning is a possibility. Um, and by doing some of these things we already do and altering them a little bit. Um, C T classes come with point five funding as well, um, so we get, we get a little bit of extra money for these kids being in these classes. Um, well, C T is career and technical education, so, um, you know, trying to prepare these kids for. Um, careers, um, post-secondary successfulness, so, um. We've, we've met with her once, but I'm, I'm excited to continue to work with her on that, so. Um, nine students attended Fort Hayes Tech Northwest, Go Tech on November third. And just learned about different educational offer, um, opportunities they have.
That's good, right?
Yes, yes. Um, and then on the thirteenth, Mrs. Bowles hosted a senior financial aid, uh, fast for night. Um, we had eight of our thirty-two seniors attendant, attendant, excuse me, attended, um. We're a little disappointed in the results, but the, the gal who come, came and helped facilitate that thought we had, really had a good turnout, so. Um, it's, it's kind of surprising with that, um. Creative Arts Club wrapped up face painting, um, fundraising during football, they hosted their Halloween contest and pumpkin carving contest. Um, C E C recently took a club trip to Denver to see Meow Wolf. Um, there's, I don't know a lot about it, there's four interactive art museums with themed and hidden rooms. Um, and then they, so they ate at Texas Roadhouse with that. Um, our woods and carpentry classes, um. Busy with projects, a large majority of the kids took H, OSHA safety training this year. Um, at the beginning of the year, um, which came with that certification, and I believe a college, a college credit with it as well. Um, lots of various projects going on, um, the carpentry class, the residential carpentry class, they're starting on a small building. Um, if you look out back, back of the bus barn, the deck's completed there, they're starting to lay out the walls and such, um. With limited access into the building, they are gonna try to do that outside this year, so, um, weather, weather. Good weather pending progress on that, so, but we'll get started on that. Um, our drama club, um, this year put on Beauty and the Beast, it was this Saturday and Sunday. Um, I'm not sure on the attendance, I did, I did go watch, uh, Sunday, uh, I thought the kids did great. It was a musical, so, um, it was, it was fun to see some of those kids that I wouldn't, uh. Pointed out as a singer, doing, doing a great job and, and putting their talents on display, so, uh, good job did the, there's a lot of kids. There was kind of a small cast in front of the stage, but there was a lot of other kids that helped with the, the stage prep and the stage design. Um, and then Mrs. Bass is our, our drama club sponsor, so I'm glad we can offer that for the kids. Um, what, excuse me. High school wrestling, um, and basketball have started, um, as well as junior high. Junior high, it looks like we have eighteen girls out, twenty-seven boys out, uh, high school wrestling, we have thirteen boys and three girls. High school basketball numbers are looking like fourteen girls and eighteen boys, so we're excited to see the season there. Um, junior honor choir performed in Norton on the eighth, but that used to be in Hayes, this is the first year they've done it in Norton. New high school, so, it's nice, it's closer, um, there was fifteen, fifteen that were selected and we had fourteen attend. Um, and the music department is gearing up for the Christmas concert, which is on what day? Ours.
It's junior high and high school.
Oh, we'll figure that out, okay. Duly noted, we'll work through that.
There's a lot of people that can't attend it, so.
So, um, F F A Greenhand Food Science Team got fourth, not sure what day that was. Um, Greenhand Milk Quality and Products Team got seventh, this was, that was last Wednesday in Logan. Um, that contest is, that science contest is coming up in Norton on Wednesday. Um, and then we won't have any more F F A contests till July, excuse me, January. Uh, our welding and ag fabrication classes, um. Were able to do a, a- as well as Mister Graffles, uh, carpentry classes, uh, concurrent enrollment. Dual credit through, uh, Fort Hayes Northwest, Goodland. Um, and Kayla from there is coming over to observe that tomorrow, to see how that's all going, so. Du- dual credit for welding and then also for our carpentry classes, so, those credits, those credits will transfer in there, so, for their introductory level classes. That's all I got to say about that.
Will there be any more celebrity national anthem singers coming up?
I think Mister Stoddard is next.
You only have one.
Uh, on that, I got a lot of people that said, that wasn't there as bad as we thought it would get. If you'd like to see the video, there's a small paper review fee, but.
No contract.
Nope, no contracts, they haven't asked me to sing at the Christmas concert, so, you know, short-lived career.
Okay, we had, um, sixth grade went to the P D C for some Halloween fun. Um, they try to do all their di- the different holidays with the P D C and they, they really do enjoy that relationship. And they finished up the Outsiders book and they've moved on to a number of the stars. We did pair up with our reading buddies to do the soup parade again this year, just to have a big person with a little person. Um, during that same week, we also had the book fair and it raised six to seven thousand dollars, um. Here, and then a lot of that money goes back into book credits so that we can buy through Scholastic and use them in our, in our school, so. Um, Scholastic's always amazed at how much we actually bring in. We held that on the same night as our family night again, which seems to bring in a lot of people. We had, um, our STEAM family night, which, I just looked it up again. Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts and Math, is what that stands for, and so. Um, title brings in different, like at least twice a year, and, um, P T O, they provided soup. For the families to attend and, and enjoy that also as part of it, um. We got this company out of Pablo, Colorado, and it's the same company that brought the planetary am a couple years ago. Where you could walk in to like see the constellations and so. They, they offer some amazing things, so we really, we really do like to go and try some different things for our school.
I'm totally amazed at how much the books cost at the book fair.
That's not set by us, that's set by Scholastic.
Is that the best we can do is ten bucks a book or whatever, or? Really?
Yeah, I mean, that's inflation.
That's pretty bad.
And it's hard, I mean, that's what.
A book maybe.
That's our, I mean, even our library books, that's where we're at, I mean. And that's not even including the little pens and erasers.
Car posters at it?
Oh, yes, yes, car posters. Oh, yes, yes, car posters. Red and green, I think is what we offer this year. Let's see, uh, Mr. Daligan, um, received a grant for five hundred dollars from Memphis Energy. Um, he's trying to get ukuleles for, I think it's fourth grade, um, which will be so exciting.
When is that?
It's better than the, the reporters or kazoo. He's put in for a, another eighteen hundred dollars from the Dane G. Hanson. To finish off the amount, but I think a big chunk of that is actually a stand to put the ukuleles on. And so if he doesn't get all of the money, then I think he's talked to Mr. Graffel about creating a stand.
Sorry, man, I gotta have a stand.
So, uh, and then we have six students that are going to the Elementary District Honor Choir on December sixth. Um, there's also four that are alternates, but all ten of them together will be singing, um, a couple songs during the Christmas program. Um, Veterans Day program was very well attended, uh, we, the, the amount of people from the. Community was amazing this year, and I don't know if it's because we had Abby Walters as our speaker, or good weather, or I think maybe the word's getting out. And it's, it is a good program. Um, so Abby Walters was our, our speaker, and then Dave Kane actually came and talked also with the sixth graders. Um, that morning, uh, before the program and did a little presentation, she always tries to get a little somebody else in there for. Just to, to talk. Let's see, uh, we had parent teacher conferences, we had near a hundred percent attendance, and if they didn't come in person. Every year, every year, everybody's here, we don't even give them cookies anymore, so, I don't know, but. Um, if they don't come, uh, they, they either phone call, email, um, they talk to them in some way. But they, we have great attendance, but. Um, I'm sure there's a million other things that went on, but those are the ones that were reported.
Okay, thank you guys. Anybody getting anything to them, question here? We'll move on.
Ten, ten fifteen.
Gordon, did you hear that?
Yeah, but I was just gonna cut out real quick, so.
I'll take a break too, yeah, I'll move, uh, take a recess, five minutes.
I'll second that.
Five minute recess. And second it all over the favor. All opposed? All opposed?